Have a quorum to the board. Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. We didn't need all that other stuff anyway. So, all right, we now have a quorum. It is six oh one for the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We have a very short agenda tonight. We're gonna try to hold true to that. We will have a public forum. We have two appointments, one for the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration committee. And the second is the interim fire chief possible appointment, new business interview with interim fire chief candidate. Old business and one set of minutes from October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. So I will open it up to the public forum. Anyone there this evening would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? There being none, we will move forward. There's no one in the waiting room. Jake, no one raising hands anywhere?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we will move on. The second thing in the we have is appointments. The three hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration committee, we have Nicole Tully, who is volunteered to join this committee. Is anyone here that can speak to that? Karen, you're on the committee. Do you?
Yeah, I don't have a, hey, I didn't realize I had forgotten I was on the committee, so that's a good refresher.
Karen, that's a sign around too many committees.
Yeah, it's usually assigned, yeah, and way too many things, so.
Yeah.
But I do know Nicole, and I know she's heavily involved with a lot of other things in town, so happy to have her on board and maybe I can fall off into the sunset, so.
All right, yeah, I mean, I know Nicole well as well. I don't know her well, but I know her as well. I think she'd be a good addition. I'm curious, I'm excited to see what the committee is coming forward with at this point. So. Is there a motion? Anybody have any comments before we do that or questions?
I mean, the only thing I'd like to do, Leah, is at some point, we've put a lot of people on this committee, some people have left.
There are a lot to begin with, so maybe that's not a horrible thing, but.
No, no, but they, they, at some point soon, it'd be good to have a status update. Do they have a chair or they have a regular meetings? You know, what's the deal? What are these guys doing?
They do have a chair. Kathy Snysak and they are holding regular meetings. They're doing it at least monthly at the moment.
Yeah, and then, hey Jake, are there minutes to those meetings?
I would have to ask them if they have them yet. They're still kind of learning all the ropes to everything, so I'll remind them they need to turn over minutes.
And the interesting catch there is actually twenty twenty-three, right, is the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary?
Yeah, we set them up early partly because I think we kind of forgot exactly when the anniversary was.
No, no, Jake, he didn't forget when the anniversary was, but he's we would never do that.
No, totally, no, of course not. Anyway, so yeah. That was part of it, but also because they needed to kind of get their feet under them. They needed to figure out where they were going to get funding to run things, so there, there were some decisions that needed to be made, and then they needed to be ready to potentially petition the advisory board and so forth.
I mean, I think that, yeah, I think the main thing with the lead time was to give us enough setup to plan to appropriate something, right?
Right, right, right.
FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three, those are both accurate. Meeting, they come up with some ideas that they need funding for.
So, so Karen, are you our liaison to that committee?
I think so, and I just, to be honest, it's, I just sort of forgotten about it.
I guess so.
Got a lot of, got a lot of things going on. Affordable housing is keeping me busy too, so.
I'm sure it is, but this thing's got a short leash because that three hundred and fiftieth next summer, I think, right?
Well, next summer is twenty-two, so.
Twenty-three, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so they have time, I was thinking.
There's some time.
That's fine.
We won't stop bothering them.
So there is a chair. He came, he came to our last meeting. I don't, I didn't catch his name, who they named chair, but he came to the last meeting.
John Swift, I believe it is, right?
It is John, yes.
Okay. That was a member. Kathy Snysak's the actual chair, but she says, John, I think, to represent for the donation account. Okay, all right.
As, as long as the committee's got some traction, it's got direction, and they're holding regular meetings, and you know, there's some forward inertia, that's fine.
I'll email or message the chair and just say, hey, can you give me a high level, four or five bullets of, you know, updates where we're at and where you're at to I'll try to bring into the next meeting, so.
Great.
All right, all right. So is there a motion to appoint Nicole Tully to this committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second, pause the favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, great. All right, our second appointment, interim fire chief, Paul Jabowski.
I think it's Zip, Zipkowski, but I think he goes for Zibby by short, so I'd like
Name up. Zabowski.
Kowski, or Zibby, or Paul.
I get called a lot of things.
Okay, well, let's go with the most appropriate. Start with that, yeah.
So, Paul, I'd introduce you to our three selectmen. Leah is the chair, Karen's the vice chair this year, and Ron McCall, who's been on for a long time, has also been an advisory board member, and Leah is also on the conservation committee, and Karen's on so many committees, like, he doesn't even remember.
He did, you.
He's on the affordable housing committee, I know.
Kind of happens, everyone gets on a lot and.
Everybody, yeah, it's a small town. Also with us is Harold Simmons. He is a member of our advisory board. He was also the deputy chief in the fire department. He retired in two thousand nineteen. But I think he was on for, what, fifty years, Harold? And then Chief Dow is with us. He's chief of the fire department. And Jake is my assistant. You know Sean, and I don't know if you met Patrick Carrigan, he's a captain in the fire department, but he seems to be on the call too, just listening in. And so, you know, yes. Paul, your consideration, chief through the end of June, two thousand twenty-two. We have a tentative agreement if you're willing to consider him and yeah, you can help us guide the department. He comes to us as an experienced chief from career in Ashburnham and Berlin, and he's well qualified to help us out. So Paul, is there want to introduce yourself?
Well, um, thank you for the introduction, and it's great to meet all you folks. I'd much rather meet you in person. Normally, I would have showed up with a jacket and tie and my Dalmatian tie that everybody loves, but I just got out of a meeting with Fitchburg State for, I teach a course a semester there in business, so. Yeah, I, I understand where Karen's going, coming from and, and all the selectmen. I can't, I could never say no, and somebody asks you to volunteer for a committee or a board or, or something like that, so as you can see, I know Brian gave you my resume and things. I, I try to be involved in a lot of different things, and I have to keep busy. So when Brian approached me about this, helping out with this, I thought it would be a, a great challenge. I thought it could maybe be helpful for you. I came again, town of Ashburnham's a town of forty-two square miles, six thousand people. I was chief there for here, here in my hometown for twenty-one years, on for thirty-six, and, and then I was retired for a year and a half, and then I went to town of Berlin for, it was supposed to be a six-month interim, and it ended up being three years and a month, and, and I'm not interested in doing another three years and a month, just to, just to put out, put that out there. Because I have to, I, my retirement on deferment and everything, it's a, it's a, it's a big process, but I, I'm certainly looking to, to help out. I enjoy challenges, and, and there were some things that I saw in my conversation with both Chief Murray and Brian, that I, I think I might be able to help move things forward over the next six or eight months. If you want me to, I, I think, again, I've got a lot of experience. When I went to Berlin, there was a, a lot of issues. There was two separate departments, actually three, the fire EMS and emergency management were all separate. And the day I came was the day that they merged, and they had people that wouldn't, wouldn't talk to each other. The two chiefs of the departments wouldn't talk to each other, and, and don't touch my trucks, don't touch your trucks. They lived in the same house, so it was, it was quite a, it was quite a, a culture shock, but they had over ninety people on the rosters there, but the police department was waiting for a response from the ambulance service for sometimes fifteen or twenty minutes. So that, that was quite problematic when you have that many people. So, anyway, when I left after three years and a month, that wasn't a problem anymore. I can't guarantee anything, you know, coming in. All I can say is I can look at what, what's going on and try to help to move things forward. I know Brian has talked about, you know, regionalization efforts and, and looking at that, everybody's talked about that. Something I looked at when I was in Berlin, talked about regional ALS and worked with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And I know you talked about, you know, different regional, regionalization with Pepperell and Groton. I would, I would say, you know, if you, if you, if you're looking to do something like that, then I would work with the regional planning commissions because it's free. Otherwise, you're talking thirty to fifty thousand dollars to hire somebody to come in and do one of those studies. And that's, that's being honest, because I've done those too for another company, but that, it's, it's, it's very expensive and time consuming to do that. But you could bring, either, because you're, you're split up, because Groton is actually in Monticuzet Regional Planning Area, and then Northern Middlesex County of Governments is where you folks and, and Tingsborough and Pepperell are all in that area, so it might take a coordination of the two to do that, but anyway, I, I can, I mean, I could, I could talk all day about things that I've, I've done and, and worked on, but I'd rather answer any questions that you might have for me.
Um, did we just lose Brian, or did my screen change?
I, I think he may have fallen off, but hopefully he's able to rejoin us shortly.
Okay. Yeah.
Like, I can jump into a couple of questions. We are recording the meeting, which is useful, so.
Yeah, please.
Thank you for, you know, coming forward tonight and chatting with us. I guess one thing that I know is unique to Dunstable, I like to think we're a unique town, is sort of all volunteerism effort of our department. Do you have, I mean, I'm sure you have experience of it, you know, do you have any recent sort of experiences with that and what that's meant to you and what you know about our, you know, what affiliation do you have with our group now, sort of in that lens?
Can, can you say that one more time in the beginning? I missed the beginning of what you said.
Joe, I'd asked about your experience with volunteer, you know, fire departments.
So.
On call, yeah.
Yeah, I grew up in, in, in the town of Ashburnham. I was, I got on the fire department in nineteen seventy-eight as a call firefighter, and then became an EMT on the call department. I was the first full-time firefighter hired in the town. So there was a full-time fire chief since nineteen seventy-five, and in nineteen eighty-five, I became the first full-time firefighter. And then we added a couple after that, and then I got the paramedic service started in Ashburnham. When I went to town of Berlin, Berlin was all call when I got there, and then we, over the three years, we added a couple of, we added, started with a couple of per diem positions and, and morphed that into a couple of full-time positions during the three years. Again, it's, it's it's difficult out there right now because everybody's having a hard time finding volunteers or paid-on-call people every, everywhere across the country. It's difficult to do. A lot of places are, you know, trying to mix it up with per diem staffing, and, and again, the requirements to be, to be a firefighter, to be an EMT, to be a paramedic, it's just, it doesn't lend itself easily for people to, to, to be able to volunteer to do it or to get paid, you know. People really have to want to do it to get ten bucks an hour to come out at two o'clock in the morning to do it, so to speak, you know, so it's, it's real, it's a real challenge. I, I, I know the, the ins and outs of it all. If, if I'd be rich, if I had that magic ball, and I could say, this is how we could fix it. Every, again, you said it hit the nail right on the head. Dunstable's unique, every community's unique, and there's, there's hopefully a unique solution to helping each community along. There's no, there's no magic fix-all for each community, for, for everybody.
True. Actually, that leads into sort of my next secondary question, and then I'll let some other folks chime in. Do you have any affiliation with Dunstable currently?
No.
Okay.
No, I, I, let's see, when I was president of the Fire Chief Association of Mass, I came to Chief Rich, Charlie Rich's retirement party. So I know Charlie Rich. I, I think I met Chief Simmons at the retirement party and a couple of others, but no, what we, we didn't do either attached that I was with, we didn't do mutual aid or anything like that, so. So I don't, a connection.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, thanks, Karen. So you actually kind of touched on my questions and but I do have a very impressive bio. We did, we do have that and your resume, and that really covers a lot of the experience and covered a lot of the, sort of the, the questions that I had. So is there, Ron, do you have any, anything or?
So I guess my biggest question is Sean was in Hudson. And Hudson's not very far away from Dunstable. And, you know, there were a couple of events that happened this past spring. Mutual aid, one particular Saturday afternoon, a brush fire that really got out of control. And, and Sean was there thirty minutes, maybe twenty, all right, and he picks up incident command. And I think at that point in time, we probably had as many as twenty-five pieces of apparatus there from different towns. It was not, it was not a minor effort, it was a significant effort. Wind was blowing the fire into the house, a line of houses along a particular street in town. Yeah, and, and if it wasn't for Mari showing up, I don't, we, we would not have had an incident command structure for some period of time, or one of the other towns would have assumed it. How do we get you into Dunstable in that situation, or two o'clock in the morning when there's a significant event? Ashburnham?
It's, it's about, it's about twenty-nine minutes with, if, with the traffic. So, two o'clock in the morning, it's probably, it's a little faster, lights and sirens.
Yeah.
But it's a big town, so I guess it depends on what side of Ashburnham. If you're on the far side.
So I'm not, not, I'm not near the winter inside. I'm right near the center of town, so. Yeah, so it's, it's through Ashby and Townsend and, and over, so it's, it's, it's about, again, at, at a, at a normal pace, it's about twenty-nine minutes, but and again, it's important to have the training so that you have the command structure. And it's important to have the working relationships with the area departments, which I do have with some of them already, so that, you know, you cover each other.
Yeah, the training isn't so much what the issue was. The issue is that, is that the, the, this is a very significant event early on, and there was only two people at the scene. And, and they need hose lines in their hands. And so, you know, Mari showed up, and it was a Saturday afternoon, and he pulled it all together for us, because at, at one point in time, it was a little crazy over there. It's not a training issue, it's a resource issue, and how, you know, how quick you can get there. And in, 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 you know, in full disclosure of that, that's part of this job, is you gotta be able to get in the car and go to these calls, and, you know, two o'clock in the morning and a structured fire, you know, mutual aid, we're probably going to have enough offices or enough staff that we can supply that, but when you get a Dunstable event, and prior to that, on a weekday about eleven o'clock in the morning, maybe three, three or four weeks before that, we had another brush fire that got out of hand, and that went to the same situation where there's probably thirty-five or forty-five trucks, water shot all, the whole nine yards, and if, and Murray was there to direct it, and so you know, full disclosure, I think that you've got to kind of think about that when you take this job on, that you got to put your boots and coat on and go to work.
Yeah, I've always been a working chief. I've never been sit on my hands, so I, I, I would be, I'd respond, you know, again, dispatch would have my number, and I'd be listening if I, if I can hear it. Like, I get, I get scanner apps in my, in my cell phone, so I'm always listening to something, so, yeah. I would, I would respond day and night, weekend, and that's not, that's not part of the normal. I, I, the, so not, not something I worry about coming up on calls.
And then the other half of it is, you know, this is, this is, in fact, a small town, and it's not well understood by a whole lot of people. It's just not. And, you know, the, the fire department, for as long as I can remember, has always been woven into the fabric of the community. And a lot of these events that go on around here have fire department participation. We have, we have senior citizens cookouts in a whole lot of other events that, that are very unique to the town. But the people that are in the town, that live in the town, participate in these events, have an expectation that those things are going to continue. And the Firefighters Association, which has been around forever, is a healthy association today. It's got quite a bit of money in the bank, and there's a lot of donations that come in on a regular basis from townspeople that just send us checks. And I can tell you, it's going on even as today, you know, there's checks coming in the mail all the time, fifty bucks, twenty-five bucks, a hundred bucks, somebody sends us a check for five hundred bucks. And so, it's, it's, you don't find that around that often. It's, it, but it's germane to Dunstable. You know, and the other towns, Tingsborough's going to Firefighters Association, they all do, and to what extent they function within to create that, 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 that weave with the townspeople.
With the department.
Yeah, the town, yeah, exactly. You know, we used to have things like, you know, kids' birthdays at the fire stations, and, you know, we did all that stuff, and you know, and in chief, I'm, I'm telling you, I think that the town's starving for that right now. It's, it's not gone away. It's not gone away. I get calls on a regular basis wanting to know about stuff that's going on with the fire department, and, you know, you know, somehow, some way, we got to try to bring some of that back into the town and, and, and make that work better for everybody. And, you know, in full disclosure, that's, you know, certainly one of the things that, that we're going to look at with you is to, is to continue or develop that.
Like, I, I helped to save the firefighters' association here in town years ago, because it was floundering. And again, I looked at that as the, again, the social law of the department, it, it got to the people. We did Thanksgiving Day dinners to invite people to come into the fire station, and I mean, we did all kinds of events, you know, so we had, you know, hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary celebration of the cell station, whatever. We, we, we do all kinds of events just to be part of the community as you're speaking, so. So that's not, that's not something that's foreign to me. And then when I went to Berlin, they, they, they had a pretty good setup over there that they already did things like that, so that's the, those, that's the fun stuff.
You are.
You don't have to sell me on that.
You're not in it alone. You got a lot of people around you. There's a lot of people in the community that would jump in. I, I, I own a second home, and it's in Kennybunk, Maine. And I'll tell you, they just had an event not long ago, and there's seventy-four guys in that department, and it is a call department, and I think there was a, there was over a hundred people participating in serving and cooking food, and I just sat back and I said, Jesus, but that's the fabric, you know, Kennybunk fire, that's the fabric of that town. That's the same thing we got going on here. Same thing, same thing. And it's, it's just not a matter of coming, putting out the fires and going home. We got to, we got to kind of get that karma, get that going back again, and, you know, it's a fire department's been on the rocks the last few years, and so we, you know, what, it's, it's, this association is important to, it's important to the town. It just is, it just is, and, and you need to know that going into it, chief.
Okay. Quite taken.
And so is this a position that you're interested in? I take it?
What's that?
This is a position that you are interested in, or she wouldn't be here tonight, right?
Yeah, the challenge, I like challenges, so.
We all do. We don't win them all, though, do we?
It's, it's, it's like I told, right, if you want somebody that's just going to come and, and sit on his hands and, and, and corner office all day long, that's not me, so.
No, and I'll tell you, Sean Murray didn't do that either. Sean Murray was very active in this department. And he gets high marks for his, his efforts and his involvement, his participation, and his intellectual being is in that, in that chief's role. He gets, he gets high marks.
Ordered him all the way through.
Good, thanks, Ron.
Got one more question.
Good points, yeah.
So I guess, sort of in lens of what Ron was saying, when you think of the years of experience that folks like yourself and Chief Murray and Chief Rich and, you know, Ron on our board and Harold on our board in the past, where do you see small-town fire departments going in the future? Because I think that's what needs to be identified. In my opinion, is where, where do, where do they go from here, after all the years of experience folks like yourself have under your belt?
I, I can't, I can't speak for Dunstable itself, because I haven't been there yet, but overall, it's, it's not, I gotta say, it's not a rosy picture, just because volunteerism, look, how many, how many open positions do you have in Dunstable on boards?
A lot.
Well, then we can count.
Yeah.
I, I live in Ashby, and we have the town of Minnich. We have seven major bodies of water. People come here, they live here, they want to put their boat in the lake, and they want to bring their kids to soccer, and they don't want to volunteer for anything. You know, so that's what we're all up against. It's how do you fill these positions, and with a lot of your board positions, it's one meeting a month, or maybe one meeting a week with a firefighter or EMT, it's coming out at two o'clock in the morning in the middle of winter. It's going to training once a week, twice a week, maybe all weekend long, so it's, it's like I said, if I had that magic bullet, I'd be able to figure it out, but it's, every town is different, but it's, it, it, it's going away on, on a, on a grand scheme of things.
Absolutely.
You know. You know. Other, what other what other departments that offer services volunteer? Water department?
Hardly, not many. Parks. Parks Department. The Parks Department, you know, you have three volunteers there, and they oversee the maintenance, and they that's it.
The jobs have changed over the years. They're now fresh the professions and the job requirements of people, abilities on the people when they go out in the street. You know, it's, it's a lot, and like, and now with, with COVID, I just, so I, I, I hope I'm not rambling, but I just had my, my, my COVID booster last night, and it knocked me off all night long, so I just, I, I didn't have as much problem with the first two shots, but the boom, the booster, wow, I'm telling you. And anyway, but, but you've got the whole COVID crisis that, that everybody had to deal with. You know, and now there's the, the mandate that everybody has to deal with. So you're seeing people walking away from jobs, so.
That is true.
I don't know.
Crazy world.
It certainly is. It certainly is.
Yeah. Well, is there anything, and for anybody else have any questions or?
I do have to say, to Ron, that we have in common. I ran for selectmen many years ago.
Yeah.
And I lost to the incumbent, but I got more votes than the murderer.
All right, that's enough. We're not going to consider Paul anymore for candidate.
Well, thanks for coming.
Ron, didn't you run against an embezzler or something?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Not a murderer, but you had an embezzler, I think.
Yeah, oh yeah.
I got like, got one up on him.
All right, is there anything else? You have any questions for us specifically?
Um, oh, like I said, just if, if you decide that you'd like to have me, I just want to know, you know, what, what specific goal that you'd have in mind that you'd want to see accomplished in the eight months, that's all.
Oh, boy.
I think some of the things I, I talked about with Paul, you know, we have potentially the if we can get our hands on ambulance service from Pepperell, you know, if he can help us, assist us with that, if we decide to enter into this regionalization study with Groton, he can certainly represent us with that. You know, certainly, retainment of who we have is very important. You know, I think we're going to see some turnover from current events, and you know, so there's already probably some people decided they're going to move on. And, and that's a fact of life, but. Um, and, and that's a fact of life, but, you know, keeping who we have and, and trying to get more talent is important. Uh, so those are key things. And obviously, you know, just the day to day operations of the fire department facilities and taking care of the equipment. All needs somebody to watch over it. And, you know, we've got a new rescue truck that's in the build. So, you know, those are all things that the interim is going to have to watch over. And I'm sure when Paul gets in there and sees what's what, he's going to have a couple of ideas of his own. Things that he can do in a short amount of time with the resources he has and we'll welcome those ideas.
Some creative ideas for the building itself and, um, maybe what can be done to fix some of the concerns of the firefighters.
I don't.
My computer just froze. All right, there we are. Okay. Is that list long enough for you?
That was only like four things. I mean, I could keep doing it.
I mean, yeah, he's what's eight months, right? So.
Yeah. She'll get one a month.
Sure, he has some ideas of his own.
Yeah. All right. So are we ready to make a motion here?
Yeah, I'm making a mo- a motion to appoint, uh, I guess it's Mr. Paul Zibikowski until we appoint you interim fire chief, so.
Take it.
For a term to end, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
If that, yeah, if that's agreeable, yeah.
Yeah. Paul's in favor.
Hi.
Great.
Thank you.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
We're working with everybody.
Yes, likewise.
Well.
Um. Great. So do we still need to do an interview? I think we kind of did one.
Oh, I thought we just did that.
I thought we did too. So I think we're good. We don't need to cover that under new business.
Maybe at our next meeting, it'd be, I think we're in person for the next one, but if you have the chance to please come to that, that would be nice.
Yep.
Yeah. Our next meeting is what, the ninth? Does that sound right, Jake?
Hmm, I think so. Let me just check my, my calendar real quick, but I think it's, yeah, the ninth should be the next one. The ninth, yeah.
Anyway, so the plan would be, uh, Paul would start overlapping with Chief Murray on the ninth. And then, uh, he would take command on the twelfth.
Okay.
That, and so the twelfth is, I think, is the Friday. That would be Chief Murray's last day, so there'll be a few days of overlap, but, um, you know, Paul can certainly come to our next meetings if we need to.
If, if you could, Paul, uh, maybe give us, I know this is really challenging to do, but like two or three bullet points that we can put into what we do as like a quarterly letter out to our community to say, this is what's going on in town. And it might be a nice way to extend the olive branches out to folks in town to say, we're, we, we were so lucky to have Chief Murray. But now we have, you know, Chief Zibikowski, who's going to come join us. And here's just a couple high level bullets. I don't know if the other select board members are into that idea, but I think that goes a long way. But that's just my own soapbox, so I can be told to be quiet.
Well, I was, I was going to bring the, the what's going on letter up. We should probably try to get that out sooner than later. Um, so we need to craft that. So, I don't know.
There's draft up here.
Yeah, well, I, I. We're very, I put a list of ideas down.
Okay.
Yeah, I started writing for each one, so I'll send it back either tomorrow or the next day.
Okay. All right. And then we can put a little thing in there.
That would be cool.
That was good.
Great. All right. Well, thanks for joining us. I'm glad actually that we chose to go remote considering the weather out there. It's pretty nasty right now.
I had Mike deliver it.
Yeah. Good.
Well, thank you for joining us, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Great night.
All right, you too. Any old business? Anything on the town administrator report?
Well, we're having a hell of a time getting DEP to sign off on this Article ninety-seven legislation.
Yeah.
We've now lost six weeks to silence. And, uh, I've been following up every week with phone calls and emails and.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Yeah. I mean, uh, you know, our state senator intervened a couple of weeks ago and got him to send an email back that said, sorry for the slow response.
And that's it?
That was two weeks ago, you know, so. I mean, at this point, I guess I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to make an all out press. I asked DOT today to, you know, it shouldn't be hard of an ask because you both work for the state. Can you go over there and say something to them, please?
Yeah.
And, and get them off the dime. Um, and, and I'm gonna go back to Senator Kennedy tomorrow and tell him to press him because.
What else can we do? I mean.
It's so absurd. It's so absurd.
It is absurd.
We jumped through so many hoops all year. Town meeting, multiple town meetings and decisions and votes to get this project done. And now we're hung up over the logical review comments.
Right.
Nutty.
It's, it's crazy.
Yeah.
And, and we only have till December twentieth, so we only have another six weeks.
To get this done, yeah.
It, it's not us that has to get it done. It's them that has to get it done.
They need, right, for, for it, it to be done, yeah.
So I think, you know, that's the most stressful thing going on. Um, we're forming up the, the inter municipal agreement with Pepperell on the, um, water service, which is going to be a good thing. And we did get some data in, just as I was logging into the meeting, I saw Trinity sent along the data that Pepperell wants to see to continue the conversation on the ambulance service. And, um, it does look like we have a high percentage of private insurance, which is what they are concerned about because they can bill the higher, they can bill a higher rate for the private insurance than they can for the government insurance. So that's going to be a key factor for them in making a decision to provide a service.
Thank you for referring to Pepperell.
Yeah, I'm referring to Pepperell. So the, so on the Groton thing though, um, a couple developments or one development mainly was the grant that they wanted to pursue. The Community Compact Grant is exhausted for two thousand twenty-one. So there won't be, there won't be another grant opportunity. It's a different grant. It's a little harder to get. There's a regionalization study grant that we can go after late January. Um, the timing is not as good for us now that we have the interim because he's going to want to leave in June. Um, we can apply for the grant in Ju- in January, get it, you know, we'll probably get it. Get that study going if we agree with Groton on who the consultants are. Um, I don't know if the study will get done in six months on paper. It could certainly be done in that short amount of time. But it's all going to depend upon the timing of the award, when are you going to get the money? RFP response, et cetera. So that might, might track out a little bit. I can tell you this, though, I picked up on this from Leah's meeting with Groton Chief and the town manager, I think a couple of weeks ago, steals vision for coverage of the Dunstable Fire Department is a twenty-four, seven vision.
Yeah.
So what that means is you can take our current budget and multiply it by six or seven. That's not something that's going to come to fruition in June. If that's the vision, you decided.
Not feasible.
You know. I, I, so I, I guess I would say to you practically is if you can get Pepperell to give you ambulance service for much shorter money, that's a better play. And we'll just keep our fingers crossed and see if that can work out. And then, then you'd have the freedom, you'd have the freedom to pursue the Groton thing.
One of the things they were discussing is because that Groton has ambulance and that they would put possibly put one of them at in Dunstable. Then they say that, Ron?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah. So.
We have somebody who's asking a question in the audience, FYI.
We do?
Yep, Rafael Cabanas, who's a attendee. Going once, going twice.
He has a question, but, um, they, they have their hand up, so I'm just trying to make sure.
I think he, he, he's one of the firefighters.
Well, let him ask his question.
Yeah, go ahead. He's muted.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
I don't, I cannot see myself on the, on the screen.
No, we can't.
No, your, your video is not on.
Yeah.
Okay. So my name is Rafael Cabanas. I'm a current firefighter working at Dunstable.
Yes.
And, um, I, I never use my degree, but due to the current events, I think I, I should introduce myself. I'm, I'm in physics and quantitative biology. And I have been professor of physics and engineering. And currently I'm, I'm working as a teacher and I double in my time, like serving the town of Dunstable. And I wanted to, I've been following the current events for like a year. And I really would like to express my concern of, uh, the things that have been said about the fire department and the way the department has been treated. Uh, I heard Mr. McCall said that the department has been on the rocks for the last year. And I honestly don't know. I know Ron for, for quite some time, but I don't know where that assessment is coming from. Because at least in the last year that I have been serving here, we have graduated more people from the fire academy than any other year. You can ask any of my instructors at the fire academy, you can ask the director of the fire academy about the reputation that the fire department and the Dunstable firefighters we have in the academy. And he can give testimony of how hard we have worked and the degree of professionalism that we have. We still take classes in our free time. Yesterday I just took a class on high voltage. Just to be prepared for every time there is a, an emergency in town where there is a, there is a tree that falls in the power lines. I'm ready, I'm prepared. And not just going just because I'm a hot body that goes to a call. I have gone to those type of calls alone, on my own, because there was nobody available at that time. So I would like to know why we hadn't even had the chance to meet with the person who was going to be our next year. And we didn't have the chance to ask questions. And why the town has not come up and make a public statement commenting on the, all the thing that has been around in social media about the fire department. I think the town of Dunstable don't know the fire department. They don't know who we are. I have never talked to any of you guys. And nobody has come here to ask us what we do. And we really, we are working really, really hard and we are training really, really hard. And I want to address one more question that has been lingering for a while. I hear comments about drivers in the department. We are training for drivers to be a driver. Myself, I'm training to be a driver. It's a long process. It's not just to jump into a truck and start driving and go to calls. I need to make sure that I know how, not only to operate the truck, but to operate the pump, how to provide water to my fellow firefighters, how to provide it at the right pressure so I don't kill anybody, how to be able to supply water into the truck and make all that safely and efficiently. So it's a long process. I have been training for that for months. So I think, and, and, and I didn't participate in a year in any town meeting. But I think the board of selectmen and the town of Dunstable have no idea what is happening with the fire department. They have no idea what is happening with the, with the installations that we have here. They have no idea about OSHA regulations and they have no idea about any PA regulations either. And, and it's really concerning and I really want to raise my voice.
Well, Rafael, uh, I understand what you're saying. I appreciate you coming to the meeting. I'm sorry you felt left out about not being able to ask the interim chief questions. Um, we did have a meeting at the department with the officers last week and with the, with the current chief. And, um, a couple of the lieutenants were there and made themselves available to talk to the interim chief as it coming in. He was certainly, you know, available tonight to answer your questions, but I understand if you didn't know about that, that's okay.
No, I knew about that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Ron's comments about, you know, the department being on the rocks was not meant to be critical of the fire department. It was meant to be, uh, I guess a commentary of the struggles that the department continues to go through as we try to maintain a professional qualified roster of people who are willing to respond and give their time. And, and you're certainly a part of that struggle and a part of that effort. And we, we thank you for that. Continuing to be willing to be a part of that and we're continuing to go through growing pains as we do this. Um, there's no silver, there's no silver bullet to our problems. Um, we understand the amount of training that's required and the time that you have to put into it and the accuracy to keep people safe. And we appreciate the effort and we hope that you're willing to stay on with us and bear with us as we go through this change. And I think that you'll find that the interim chief that the board has appointed tonight is going to be very qualified to continue that effort, you know, through the next several months.
I, I appreciate your, I appreciate your words. I just think that if the town and the board of selectmen wants to work with the fire department, I think the first, first thing that has to happen is a change in consideration. I knew about the meeting that you are talking about. We were not invited to that meeting because there's a chain of command and we're only the officers. I work in a public institution. When the new principal is being hired, he's invited to come and every employee can ask questions. And then I'm pretty sure you guys made a fantastic decision. I'm just saying, it's consideration for the employees. You have to be able to consider that there's people there and they can feel that they're, that you guys count on them. And in this case, it felt like this was like a private meeting instead of a public meeting where only the board of selectmen ask, ask questions and we couldn't even ask any questions. So I mean.
I'm, I'm sorry you felt that way. It was certainly not intended to be that way. I think that from our perspective, we feel that we're under time pressure to make this decision. Because Chief Murray's last day is going to be the twelfth and we didn't even really have time to advertise this publicly as we would like to. I mean, so we had to kind of do what we could to, to get somebody in here so that there's not a gap in leadership and so that we can, can continue our efforts. So I, I understand and appreciate that you've, that you didn't, you know, get an opportunity to ask what you want to ask, but, um.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the chief qualifications because I read, uh, his bio. But I'm just talking about the change in attitude that should happen moving on. Like.
Well.
The fire department as, as the people who are giving their time here.
So you mentioned, you mentioned about.
Letter, right? Anytime.
So your, your comment about the social media, you may have, you may not have seen it. Um, there was, there was some commentary about a year ago when one of the former members of the fire department decided to run for selectmen. And he made some pretty critical comments about the fire department at that time and about the town at that time. And because. And because that was election activity, the town chose not to comment about it. More recently, there were some comments on Facebook uh, three or four weeks ago. Which unfortunately has led us to the situation that we're in now and the board of selectmen actually did. Make a public comment in response to that in defense of the fire department and defense of what's going on. And I, you know, there's a couple people, there's a few people in town that are critical of the fire department. And they're probably going to continue to be critical of the fire department, no matter what you do or what we do. Making your best efforts. And there's nothing, you know, we can't stop that. Um, but you should understand that I think the majority of people in town. And the board of selectmen and the other town departments appreciate what the fire department does and they support the fire department and we need your help. We're going to continue to need your help and it's a team and we're all going to do our best to work together. And and try and work through our differences.
I would like, I mean, I'm a firefighter, I'm not even an officer, but I would really like. Whoever is in town and the board of selectmen to come here and talk to the firefighters, like see what we are doing. Because it's not just me, is that. Another critic that was that there's no people from the town working in the fire department. Yes, there is. There are two ladies that work here and they work really hard and they got their degree from the fire academy and they are from the town. So eh eh eh, stop by, talk to us. Not just the officers, like everybody in the department, we are not that big, we are like ten people. And and we have been attending every single call. I mean, right now I'm at the fire station. I don't have to, they don't pay me for to be here, but I'm here in case there's an emergency coming and I can go. And and I think if the. Board of Selectmen, if anybody in town decides to come here and talk to us and see what we really do. There will be a much better understanding.
Well, Leah, Ron, Karen, do you want to add to what I'm saying at all?
I I I think I I appreciate Rafael, you coming forward and speaking tonight. Um. This that has not happened either and the not many folks do come forward from the fire department to. Sort of check in on our end of things too. Um, I I do want to say that I I think we are a little more aware of what's going on in the department than you may realize. Um, you know, I've I've lived in this town nearly my entire life. I've been on the board for six years. I've been a public servant for over twenty-six. I've been heavily involved in this town and I I feel I do have. It, you know, some concept of what goes on. Um, I I talk with Chief Murray frequently. Brian and I speak frequently. I I'm aware of a lot of the things that are going on. Um, do we stop by there all the time? No, um. You know, I have a job, I run a business, I have other things and you know, if I could pop in. I will do that more frequently, but oftenly I I don't know. Always if someone's there, sometimes it seems like the lights are on, sometimes they're not. You may be on a call that I don't know. It's not my role to be involved in the daily operations of the fire department. Um, but you know, I I certainly accept your invitation to to go in and um. Talk to guys more. I have spoken to many of the firefighters there. Honestly, I have.
Yeah, I I agree with Leah's statement and I. Yeah, thank you for your service and for everyone else who's there as well. Um, but we empower our chief to lead the department. That's what Chief Murray did a nice job with. And we're hopeful that Chief Zbikowski gets, can continue that on until we figure out, you know. Where where we go from there. I mean, hopefully it doesn't fly by too quickly, but. Yeah, we need more feedback and whether it be through email, whatever, I mean, I'm. Feedback's the only way we're going to get better, so.
Ron, you have any comment and you've been down there.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I I sit and listen, but but Rafael, I did the, I I will tell you the the select board does know. What's going on with the fire department. They absolutely do. And it's been. Um, you know, it's been, it's been a rough period and and it's it's exactly what Brian says, there's there are. You know, there's a, is a small group of people in the town that um. Throw stones at the fire department. Um, however, whatever words you want to make for that, I don't know, but. And it certainly has created for a rough time. And I don't want my words to be taken out of context or misinterpreted to be that the fire department's in tough shape. It's not. Um, and and I've worked with. Every, just about everyone that's on there today, I've worked with them recently. And it's a, there's a solid group of people down there and they're committed. Um, yeah, it's not the, it's not the old timers that were there, it's the new crowd that's and it's they're they're younger and they need to be. And that's what it needs to be, is that young blood in the fire department and. The board of selectmen is absolutely behind the fire department and I will tell you that. And I mean that very sincerely, it's it's, we we do know what's going on there, believe me, we do. There is a command structure that's in place, you got to follow that command structure, it's there for a reason. I mean, those same issues, those same. That same command structure exists at the at the police station, it's the same stuff. And you know, that's some of what you're seeing going on here, but you're certainly welcome to come to selectmen's meetings. They're open meetings, you have a discussion with whatever you want to talk about. And I commend the fact that you took the time to get on this call tonight and speak. Articulately and strategically about the issues that you're concerned with with the fire department. You get a, you get a high five from me for that. And.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, it's it's not that way at all. And I've been, and I continue to be a very strong. Um. Supporter of what that fire department does, what work it does, how it relates to the community. What the people need that work there and the town's put a ton of money into that fire department, you know, that, you know, everyone thinks that that fire trucks that's sitting there engine one. Was a freebie. It wasn't a freebie. Brian, what did we put into that thing, forty grand?
Yep.
More than that, wasn't it?
More than that.
And the rescue trucks, the with the with the extra goodies on it is two hundred thousand. Right, two hundred K?
Two hundred.
And you know, if it wasn't for the town's tax, the town only has that, there's a thousand and fifteen homes in the town, that tax base is only going to tolerate so much. And so we've been very fortunate and we're very fortunate to have all of you. Denise Boodoo, Kate Kearns. The whole, all of them. I'm very fortunate to have them and I and I spoke to, I spoke to Patrick and the other officers the other night. That as they get through this rough period to support the others, be sure that they're informed, be sure they know what's going on. And retain them, keep them involved, be positive. Um, and and I think that Patrick and Little Patrick and and Cory all heard that. The other night when when Leah and I went there and spoke with them when when this started to happen. Comment about being on the rocks is just that, this is just, this is just not a good thing for the town. Murray is a solid guy. It's a solid guy.
He likes to be called Little Patrick, Ron. I think he's Big Patrick.
No, Big Patrick is Patrick Kerrigan, Little Patrick is Patrick Boo.
I I do appreciate your words and I again extend my invitation. So if you want to pick a day and come and talk to all of us, because I think that will clear a lot of things. And and that will clarify a lot of the stuff, especially for the people who work here. You guys are talking about retention. The messages that we have been having, it's really demoralizing. So if you want to work on retention, I think communication is is the first, is the key. Uh, and and it will be great.
Well, Rafael, why don't, um, I don't know if you're. What the best way to organize that is, but um, if you want to. Get me a few evenings when that might be possible, when you think you have a majority of the department there, I think I. I'll make myself available and I'm sure that. You know, the board chair or another selectman would be willing to come with me.
I'd be happy to, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
The Zoom raise your hand feature does work.
You have to have the panelists open, though, I didn't, you, yeah, if you have that panel closed, you don't see it.
I try to because I don't know who everyone is sometimes, so if I see a name, I'll be like, oh, that's so and so, so.
Yeah.
A little hand icon, I was like, ooh, we better see what he wants to say.
Okay. Well, there's also Cory and Mike on there. No one else is raising their hand, um, but so. Anyway.
I assume that's Cory Moran and Mike Gavin.
Yeah, I'm assuming that too.
Yeah, I didn't, they weren't showing up on my list. I had to expand it to see that they're there.
They're as attendees and not panelists, so that's sort of a different arrangement with this zone apparently, so.
I think there's twelve people on the call.
Yeah, there are eight panelists and then three attendees.
Yeah, so the attendees are Rafael, Cory and Mike.
Right.
You have to, you have to click a button though to see that who the attendees are.
On mine as well, you have to open the participant panel, so. Okay, so is there anything else on this that we want to go over? Anybody else have any other comments they want to make?
Um, the other thing I would add to my report is um. I spoke to Bonnie last week and she has announced her retirement effective mid-August.
Of what year?
Unfortunately, next year, Ron. Uh, you know, it's. I think Bonnie's one of our best employees, so it'd be very sad to see her go.
Yes, it will be. Yeah, she's been fantastic.
Depending on, depending on the timing of your town clerk legislation. You could have an opportunity there to combine those positions. And create a full-time position that has more coverage. And and do a little bit of office reorganization so that you have an assistant for both of those positions. Um. By, one of the advantages of statute is if you name somebody assistant town clerk. That assistant town clerk is legally empowered to do anything a town clerk can do if the town clerk is willing to let them do that. So you you, if you can pull that off. Um, you could have a big coverage step up.
The town I grew up in does that down in Connecticut, where they have two assistant town clerks and then one elected.
Right.
And then disperse the power and it helps spread out the coverage.
Yep.
Be probably useful structure that might help us on.
I mean.
Like that notices, whatever, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, I'm not. You know, we've had these conversations with Representative Harrington. I'm not really confident she's going to get this done in time.
Yeah.
To have an appointed clerk, but even if you went interim with one position or another until you could pull it off, that might be worthwhile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, something.
Sounds good, yeah, sounds good in conversation.
Yeah, so the two positions Bonnie holds is tax collector and.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, and note that is, we made that appointed several years ago.
Right, and Jake, Jake backs her up a little bit as assistant town treasurer.
Yeah.
Cool, okay.
And I think we blended those into that one position, didn't we? Because they were separate at one point in time. When she had a run for those offices, she had a run for both of them.
Technically, they're still separate.
They're still.
They are separate, yeah.
Yes, when we went for the legislation, we sort of had a choice to say if we wanted it to be formally combined or still two separate. At the time, your chairman Walter Altricio suggested that you should keep the flexibility so you could either appoint one person as both. Or have the ability in the future to appoint two different people again if you ever wanted to. And the majority of the board agreed at the time. So technically, while it has been one person for the last twenty-something years, because she started tax vector and then became. Treasurer collector is technically still two separate titles that you grant her.
Right.
All right, well, so that's something to think about is reorg. That may, maybe a good idea.
Yeah.
Maybe more attractive for people coming in.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you can create a full-time job out of.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be this configuration, but I guess one configuration could be. Treasurer clerk, which I've worked for before and I've seen that done successfully in other towns.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, you're going to boost your coverage, you're going to increase the attractiveness. Of the job to potential candidates. You're going to provide a better service to the public.
Okay. Yeah, that's good, good to have options. Okay. Well, yeah, it'll be, it'll be hard to watch Bonnie go, that's for sure. Good person.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, anything else other than that?
No, not for me.
Okay. So we have one set of minutes from October twelfth. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, good. And um, I guess that's it.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all's in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I was very eager, I wanted to just.
Yeah, just get it out there. Um, just quickly, so you'll send out, we've got to get this uh, what's going on thing out, I think.
I'll do it, I'll do it tomorrow, I'll get it to you guys.
All right, well, no, who has the current draft?
Send that out, we can put our thoughts in.
I don't.
Yeah.
I do.